Well, we'll call this meeting to order. Have our roll call vote.
Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
George, do you see anything?
All right, please. Uh, Gresham County, Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. And we just ask, Father, you be with us tonight for our deliberations that we may do what's fair and right for the residents of Gresham County. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
There for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we do need to add the intergovernmental agreements for blight for the North Shade Township. And I did put that in your, at your seats so that you could take a look at that. If we could talk about that at J four at the same time we do parent. That's our way.
Anything else? Uh, we have approval.
Over the agenda. Second.
Movement supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Uh, a brief public comment. Anybody, anybody online?
There's nobody connected in tonight.
Okay, moving on. A consideration of the consent calendar. Anybody want anything pulled out of there?
Move the consent calendar.
Sorry, second. Tim.
The movement supported to approve it, uh, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Motion carries. Administrator's report.
Well, tonight I got a quick verbal report for you. Uh, the class comp study committee did meet last week. We looked over the class comp study, had some questions. We shipped those questions back to Paypoint, uh, as of this morning, uh, they just responded. So the idea is the committee is going to continue working through the study till they have an understanding of it. Um, once we have an understanding of it, we're going to ask Paypoint to come and present the entire, uh, study to the board. Um, where the board then will, will, will converse and make decisions on what will happen next. If you came in through the back or drove through the, uh, parking lot in between the sheriff's office and the courthouse, you will see a very large, bright new shiny chiller has been dropped off. This was ordered two and a half years ago, if you remember. Uh, it has finally been completed after all of the parts have been gathered from every corner of the world that they were searching for. Um, and it did come in at the quote that they, they gave us at a hundred and one thousand dollars. Um, they will be hooking that up this week and getting it fired up. So, um, we should have air conditioning throughout the courthouse this summer without having to have, uh, uh, somebody out there working on it every other day. Um, so I know the employees are excited about it. I know that we also caught a break because we don't need air conditioning today or tomorrow because it is going to be cold. So, um, we would have been using the AC the last couple of weeks, but, uh, this has been a long time coming and but that is finally back there. The painting contract that we had in the Circuit Courtroom Tundra in probate court, uh, it's two thirds of the way done. Um, it does look nice. I, I do recommend going up there. Um, unfortunately, they were unable to get into the probate courtroom due to, uh, things that were scheduled. So we're working on, on getting them back up there to wrap up that contract. Uh, we held veteran director interviews yesterday morning. Um, the process, uh, was very rewarding. Um, I think you will be just as pleased as we are, uh, when we bring, uh, to you, w- once the committee has selected the new director. Um, so hopefully as soon as the next meeting, but possibly the second meeting in May. Uh, we do intend to bring a veteran's director to you. Uh, payroll procurement interviews were conducted this morning. And I'll just say that the, uh, the candidates were very impressive and very competitive. Um, I'm really hoping that having this quality of candidates for these positions that we've been interviewing is kind of the turn of a tide. Where the last several, almost year, year and a half, we've not been getting people in here to interview. We feel very fortunate for both of those positions. It is time to start considerations for union negotiations with E O M and C O A M. That is the Police Officers Association and then, um, the Commander's Association, uh, under, under the Sheriff's Department. It is our understanding that this year's negotiations could be more difficult than they have been in the past. And they have asked for us to engage with them at an earlier date than, uh, previous years. Um, just, uh, if you haven't been through negotiations. Historically, we met with them, uh, in early to mid-August. Um, so they're hoping to see something closer to, uh, June for this upcoming year. But, um, as administrator, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to starting that sooner. Um, so those, those conversations we will be having as a board here coming up very soon. That concludes my report for tonight. If anybody has any questions.
I will make a contact and comment on the painting. I went up there, I was here doing some business and I run upstairs and took a look at the rotunda and stuff. And it, it, we still had packs to put in, but the courthouse, I went into Circuit Court. It just really looks good. They did just did a nice job of fixing that stuff. There was a big piece of plaster, a laugh or something hanging from the ceiling of the courthouse. And there was a bunch of it in a rotunda down, oh, two thirds of that fixed when I was there. Um, they just did a nice job there. Any other questions for Chris? Or your commissioners reports? George?
I, uh, attended, uh, Gresham Integrated Health Systems Meeting. And, uh, went over quite a few items there. Uh, they're doing, um, many innovative things now that, uh, they've been able to do. They've got a good team working over there now and I'm, I'm pretty impressed with what they can do. Um, went to Hamilton Township. They're talking about building a new township hall. And they're going to get, they, they had a contractor there and they're going to get bid, um, possibly have a hall. Hopefully by the end of the year. Depends on how much materi- materials they can have, you know? But I think building materials are becoming better, easier to find, so. And went to North Star Township.
Did they say anything about their A R P funds? Because their A R P funds were for repairing their old hall.
Well, they're talking about building one, so then we may want to get ahold of them if that's what was in the contract.
Okay.
And they, they, you know, it's not that hard to change the contract. We just gotta, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you see Tom, you'll see Tom.
Yep.
Alright. And then I went to North Star Township. They're once again having cemetery problems. Um, we'll see if we can't get those things resolved by the next meeting. We'll see. Um, went to Lafayette Township. They're looking at possibly joining the, uh, blight ordinance program. So I get hold them, they could get ahold of, uh, from his department and get all the information they need to there as far as the, these resolutions and things like that. Um, then went to Wheeler Township. And they're talking about roads and what kind of gravel to get. I guess they've had a lot of problems with gravel the last couple of years in the mix, so they're working on that. And went to Breckenridge Township. Uh, did they ever get ahold of you? I told them to get ahold of you. They are going outside the scope of the, uh, the RPA money that we got them. And they're looking for a big grant. And I did ex- did tell them at the time that they cannot use that money as, as a, um, man. So I told them, you, they better get ahold of you before they do something that they can't undo. So I told them that. Um, so we got a outward meeting coming up next week. So that's basically it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I went to the Arcada Township, I mean, April 12th, yeah, till six P M. So I was a little late. Um, they, uh, when I walked in, they were talking about Shoemaker Technologies, a web design. Uh, I, I haven't been there in a while, so I, I said, well, do you have any questions? That I can't answer? Uh, Doug Merchant said, well, I wonder why we spent twelve thousand dollars on hiring a, a Tony administrator? When we were, we just hired in-house. And I said, well, we didn't know we're gonna do that. You know, we wanted to look at everybody and I think he bought that pretty good.
Well, it's the truth. Seems a lot easier when you tell the truth.
And, uh, their secretary said something real, uh, interesting about, um, the, the primaries are, are going to be held in Michigan, uh, next February and March.
They haven't, they haven't settled on a date yet, but it looks like the.
Are they going to be different dates, the Democrat?
Um, we are, the Bureau of Elections is asking legislation to not let that happen, to settle on one date. So they're not sure if the Republican Party is going to caucus or if they'll be willing to change their bylaws to move it to February as well.
Well, she said that we might, uh, seeing that we, we gotta be open for like over a week.
Nine days.
Nine days.
Nine days to move everything to Ithaca and vote at the same place.
Yes, I am trying to put together a plan to propose to the townships. Legislation has not come up with our guidelines that we can do and can't do. Um, so as far as us starting to do contracts and to, to make plans, we could do all that. And then have all the rules and regulations change and we do a bunch of planning for nothing. So, but my goal and hope is that the townships will, the townships and cities will agree to having one location for a voting center for our county. Um, I've been in contact with the R E S D. They're gonna hopefully decide next board meeting, which is next Wednesday, if we can possibly have it hold it there. So that, um, everybody would come there to vote for their nine days. So it is in the, it's in the back of our mind, just on the back burner, it's coming.
There's kind of a plan, but the state may not, not happen.
Yeah, so we can't get too excited about a plan until we know that it's announced.
It's a me plan, but if the state says it's okay.
If, if there's a plan, but not me.
I had a meeting with, uh, the Bureau of Elections came to our district for, for the municipal clerks and, or for us, the county clerks. And, um, they said, she, she was of the opinion from the Bureau of Elections that legislation is not going to have our guidelines until the end of the year. So.
It's a little late.
It is.
There's an election in November.
Well, we'll chip through and get her done.
I know the city of Ithaca has council elections in November.
Yes.
Well, I, um.
State and federal elections that are required, the nine day voting.
Okay, good. That helps.
Well, I, uh, and then the, the next night, Thursday, April thirteenth was the summer council meeting, but I, I stayed home, but Dave went and I'm eager to hear what, uh, it to summer.
Dave?
Well, not a whole bunch. Uh, they had, uh, a, a boundary dispute between properties. And they had the mother and the daughter and the son-in-law. And they were getting them apps out and looking at them. And I guess they finally got the, the people agreed with what, uh, the township was talking. But I don't know whether there's a, an alley in between there. And then somebody had moved the stakes and the one lady thought that it had been surveyed. It was a mess, but that was, that was a big part of the beating. I told them you were just too beat up from seventh grade class to show up. They said, oh, we understand that.
Oh, those seventh graders are, God bless them.
Anything else?
Well, I went to the Alma City Commission for part of it, as I wanted to go to the Sum- the Seville Planning Commission. And they were talking about sewers and roads and stuff in Alma. The time I left and then went to the Seville Planning Commission. They had a guy that wanted to put a marijuana dispensary in downtown Riverdale. And that was kind of a jerk. He was talking over everybody and disputing everybody else's facts if they didn't agree with his. And they shut him down.
I think Riverdale was the first place that they come to trying to put one in before the county or any place that, that we had one in the county. Riverdale was the first place they wanted to have one. And they, and that was probably, I don't know, John was still here?
I think John was here.
Yeah.
He was, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know he was because he was talking about it, yeah.
Yeah. He shot him down. Okay, too. And that was going to be the first one. That's probably a couple of years ago. They just got the law through and nobody knew what the law was. Anything else?
Nope.
Jim?
Yes, um, I attended a meeting yesterday at Michigan Works. I did bring some, uh, paperwork in to give to, um, our clerk, which will be in the next packet. And I just showed you the jobs that are open here in Gresham. I believe it's just Gresham County. It tells you what, um, education you have to have with it. I believe I, I gave you one last year too. And, um, um, I think we're kind of re- still trying to restructure. Uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of things happened with Michigan Works. And one of them is, um, uh, we, I'm not sure what we're going to do yet about, we're losing money from the, uh, state, federal. Um, I think it's one point, no, it's eleven million dollars. I'm sorry, eleven million dollars. I'm sorry, so I'm drawing eleven percent. I've got a lot of numbers these days, eleven percent, which is millions of dollars. And, um, all of the, um, programs that they had for veterans, um, homeless and, uh, people getting out of jail will probably go away sometimes in June or July of this year. And then I also, when I left the meeting last week, the last time, I went to St. Louis meeting. It's hard to get to theirs because they start, and usually we're here till seven, seven-thirty and they start at six and they're usually done by seven, seven-thirty. So, and I dropped off the, um, sheriff's end year annual report to them. They were thrilled to get that. Um, I always make copies and, and pass that out. And, um, then I went to Bentley Township last month. And, or this month, I mean. And, um, they are working, there's a new fire hall going to be built in Breckenridge and Wheeler. And, uh, so they're working with, um, you know, they pay, they pay partly to St. Louis and partly to Wheeler and Breckenridge. And Wheeler, of course, and Breckenridge have gone up on theirs. And so they're dealing with that right now. So, and that was mostly what that meeting was about. So other than that, then, um, that's about it.
Ready? Um, so I went to New Haven and Newark Township. They're really talking about windmills. Uh, they got a lot of them laying down and just getting ready to start to put them up. Concrete is, we all know last year they'd had some up, but couldn't get a contract for concrete. So what's happened is that, uh, the builders, they out on Warner Road where they have the laydown yard. They've got two big concrete processing plants in there, so they're going to make their own concrete. And, uh, start trucking in, so it's just starting to dig holes here next week or so in those two townships. Uh, met with Alba Township. Um, they're looking at, they have a ball field, uh, down at Bannister. Um, and they'd like to see about turning that over to the county system. And I talked to Pete today. We have a meeting tomorrow. We have a meeting this week. I think we're going to need, and I'll bring that up again. But they did that in, uh, they took like Looney Eye Park, they took, uh, the Pompeii Park. And it doesn't take a lot of maintenance, I don't think, or, you know, they're just going to freshen them up and, and, uh, there's not a lot there. I think there's a couple of ball fields and maybe some swings or something there in the games, isn't it?
Yeah.
Last time I was looking up there.
Nice ball fields.
Yeah, yeah, they're nice ball fields. We got sensing and all that. Uh, met with Kathy from North Shade Township. Uh, we talked about blight ordinance that they had started in the fall. And it's, we had two of really kind of fell through the cracks in the transition of our administrator. They were dealing with Tracy and they weren't dealing with the phone department. And so we got that back on track, uh, tonight we have both of those. They've already signed them, uh, Kathy from North Shade, they already published theirs in the Herald last week. They were, and they had to publish it once and they already did that. And we don't have the agreement signed, so we're going to sign it tonight hopefully. And, uh, they thought they were ready to roll with it and, uh, and Perryton was the same way. I met with them and, um, they, we got the blight ordinance kind of spread away, spread away and they're going to have that on the agenda tonight too with them. That just, they were dealing with Tracy and it just kind of fell through the cracks to, didn't get to the right department, out of the building department. So we got that fixed during the last few days. Um, also Perryton is, uh, working in their A R P funds. There was some money for water needs and, uh, they're trying to rebid that now. Apparently it was a big overbid or whatever they, I say it got, it was, it was an increase. And so they're trying to get it back down to where it was. I also spoke with the Ashley Lions Club. Not sure why they asked me. I told them I probably at the bottom of the barrel, they couldn't find anybody else. But I got a freebie on that. And so, uh, talked about county, uh, uh, I, I know a lot of those folks. And we talked about county affairs for the last few years. They seem to be pretty content on how the county's been moving along. I had a lot of questions. And the next night I met with the Village of Ashley and we talked about their water project. And I want to tell you, here's some people that are just happy. The, the Dollar Store just signed the contract. Um, they're going to come out on twenty, or out on fifty-seven. As you know, we talked before, Ashley owns between, when you go in the main street and back to McClellan Road, back to the east, they own that. Maybe it's a hundred, I don't think it's a hundred acres, but they have a chunk of ground there.
About eighty acres.
Eighty or ninety acres there. And, uh, A R P money provided funding to get water and sewer out there. Dollar Store signed the contract, uh, they're just working out the title insurance and some stuff like that with them. And, uh, there'll be a Dollar Store out there. They have another little small factory that's looking at coming out there. Uh, and I mean, this just happened and of course, we probably given the money six months ago, I guess probably it was. And, uh, so they're, they're real excited about getting some activity out there. That's about it. Any questions for anybody? Alrighty, consideration new business? Moving on, uh, Bill Henderson.
Good afternoon.
How you doing?
Bill Henderson, how are you? Doing well. Thanks for asking. So if everybody's doing well, um, there's a couple of things here. First of all, our agreement for extension services that, uh, is for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three year. That's, that's right. I got that right. I want to make sure I got my ears right. Uh, we had a change in that one so that we had originally, um, one point five F T E support staff for the office. Uh, and the change in that new agreement was to make those one point five F T E um, support staff, MSU paid support staff versus county support staff. In other words, we're going to take, we were going to take them in. Um, we actually had to advertise and, and hire, take them in and pay them through MSU. And that increased the dollar amount for that service agreement for this year that we're currently in. Um, and so we went through that process. We, we put into the budget a couple of months of, of leeway because we knew it'd take us some time to advertise a position. Um, and go through the interview process because we have to do that even though we had very good support staff at the time. Uh, and we ended up hiring actually the, um, Kami, uh, um, Paxy that was our point five F T E. And Joan actually went to work for her daughter. So we had, we hired Kami for the one point O position. Kami's been working out phenomenally. Uh, she started in an MSU capacity on January thirtieth. Uh, and then we interviewed, we, we extended the position for the point five two times. We interviewed through that. Uh, we, and in the end had one candidate that was probably acceptable, but as I talked to the staff, we decided that we could get by with just one point O F T support staff that we'd rather save some money going forward. Um, and so that we would just not hire that point five and then we eliminate the position. So the basics of it is today that I wanted just to do an amendment to clean up our service agreement. To say that including in the service agreement, there would be the regular assessment. There would be point five towards the additional, um, the additional point five towards, uh, four H coordination. And then one point O F T E for support staff, uh, and the dollars and cents are in there. So in the end, it's going to save us about, whatever, I wrote it down somewhere, about about twenty-five thousand, a little over twenty-five thousand dollars for this year, which would be a good thing. The goal is to going forward, um, be able to free up enough funds to where we could hire in a programming staff person into the office. And we thought that that would benefit the county, uh, more than having that additional point five. At the time, I certainly didn't want to let anybody go that, uh, was a county employee. But since Joan left, that opened up that opportunity for Kami. And in turn opened up the opportunity to see if one point O would suffice. And, and Kami's doing a fantastic job. So the amendment simply states that, uh, that there'd be a base assessment, which is the same fifty-three thousand five hundred forty-three. Uh, that, that thirty-four thousand three hundred thirty-three to fund the additional point five four H. That's B, that stays the same. And then in bold on the amendment, it's twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-three to fund one point five F T E employed clerical staff from October one through December thirty-first. Cause that's the amount that, that we had, uh, budgeted. And then fifty-one thousand five hundred six to fund one point O F T MSU employ- employs clerical staff from January through September two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and so, uh, that saves us, like I said, a little over twenty-five thousand. And then the rest of the, um, service agreement will stay the same. Uh, and then I looked at, the other thing I attached, I sent to Angie a copy of, uh, our two thousand twenty-two annual report. I wanted you all to see that, uh, just to kind of give you an idea, especially for new commissioners, the, the idea of what's going on in the office as far as where we're at the fat. And so you all, I'm not going to page through this, 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 uh, but it should be attached. But we, we did program in every one of the areas, uh, that MSU Extension, um, has expertise in, in agriculture and agribusiness, health and nutrition, uh, certainly children and youth development and then community food and environment, which includes NAPR resources, homeownership, et cetera. I gave a sample of those stories, uh, throughout, some nice pictures, take a look at those. Um, then some of the, many of those I took myself, so I wanted to say that. Uh, but I did want to include the staffing as it is now currently. Uh, and so, uh, what this amendment and what the service agreement helps fund is the assessment for those services. And then Pamela and Paxy and then point five of four H. The other point five of the four H is in the agreement. So the rest of those staff that are in the office are, are paid through our other funding sources through MSU Extension to the benefit of the county. I always want to point that out. Um, and then the additional staff down here are, are, are staff that serve the county closely, but are regional. And then of course, we have access to the statewide staff as well. So you can at your leisure, take a look at that. Um, one benefit of moving the support staff into MSU is, is now that's freed up completely from the county, the payroll services and whatnot. It's significantly reduced, um, our, our indirect costs. Uh, and I did look at those specifically and those have gone down considerably actually over the last several years. And I think, uh, this last year they were going to be less than five thousand dollars. I don't have the exact amount, but, uh, it's going down. So that's, that's a good thing because that frees up money in the regular budget to where if we were able to hire in other counties, I'm able to take that extra money and hire new program staff. And I'd like to do that here as soon as we're able to free up enough. Long explanation, questions? What haven't I explained?
I'll just say that in summary, what is happening here is the MSU Extension operations are being controlled and managed by MSU now. controlled and managed by MSU now almost one hundred percent versus five, six, seven years ago, it was managed by the county. So that's why we're seeing the, the agreement amended. It is one hundred percent village funded. So this does not affect the general fund bottom line. And um, the, the services being provided are the same. And in the future, it sounds like they're actually going to increase for the same mileage.
That's correct.
So in the mileage, you get, you get all the mileage, whether you use it or not, right?
We get our portion that's appropriated between us and Greater Graca, correct?
So you get that amount of dollars with both of that, within that budget. Probably the person working for MSU would earn more funds than working for us?
Uh, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Sometimes that's the case, sometimes that's not.
That's it.
Uh, but the, the, the biggest benefit to the county is those legacy costs. So that's a benefit. But as far as the, the total amount, what we do every year is I try to be very conservative with the budget that we have to stay within the amount. And most of the time try to stay below that. My goal is to stay the, below that enough to where I can generate enough to hire an additional staff person to bring in another more program. If I can. So there is a surplus and that has been different on, at different years. There hasn't been one every year generated, but there has been most years, I think it now it's some, somewhat, somewhere in the range of forty thousand, I think the last time we checked.
So who holds on to that money? Do we have it here at the county or do you?
The county does.
County does.
In, in, in my opinion, the good thing about this is, so we control this. There's still things that the county does as far as like if we submit an invoice, like we did some remodeling of the front office to make it more usable. Uh, and so that had to go through the county. Uh, we, we budgeted for that. Uh, those types of things so that you all have oversight over us. So it's, so we're not necessarily a department of the county, but we're pseudo department to that extent. And it's nice to have that oversight, uh, because we're there on behalf of the county residents to serve them through you all. So that's nice to have that tie. It's just that financial tie as far as writing checks and, and, and whatnot is become less and less. Now, the place, the office in Elma is rent is leased, right? And that's owned by the city of Elma. And the county is actually the uh, less E and the city is the less R. Uh, and so if we were to take over that, that just, it's, there's more um, administrative side of things that we'd have to tackle on the MSU side of things. So, but there's, that's justification for those indirect costs still. And the utilities are paid by the county. Um, I think that we pay out of our office, the internet bill.
You say they're paid by the county. Does that come out of your?
Comes out of our funds, right? So we make sure that everything, the total, some total of all costs to the county for MSU Extension is within that budgeted amount.
The other side of that, you, you, you serve a lot of people? I mean, you, you have programs where a lot of people attend and, and use the?
We do, okay. But that's, that is, so there's indirect and there's direct. There's direct programming that, that um, uh, programming staff do so that they'll meet with farmers. They'll have programs like um, uh, they're starting up um, our meals for the uh, um, the, the program for uh, mental health in relation to, to, to farming. Uh, there's farm field days that Monica Jean, our field crops person does. So they'll reach people in Gracha County as well as the surrounding counties uh, very often. Uh, there's pesticide review trainings that are held in our, our county office. Uh, there's four H program that's done through the office. So that's all direct programming, direct programming numbers. And there's indirects like articles that are written and that are impacted. We've got, that's why I put the internet numbers in here. Um, the website received three thousand nine hundred ninety-three page views. That's just by Gracha County residents. Uh, and most of those page views were for four H. So there's a lot of, of searches that someone does on the internet. Like for instance, if you wanted to learn about a particular insect or uh, something to do with gardening, you may do a search. It would end up on our website uh, very often. Uh, then you'd have articles, there may be programming events that you go to. So that's some indirect reach right there. So we do try to keep the um, the analytics as far as the Gracha County residents who are accessing our services through the websites. Or through online programming, like Holly Terre, who's another educator, who, who was a just a, a great um, addition to the office because she does a lot of programming to do with like a matter of balance and a lot of um, uh, we have Sheila Heber doing Tai Chi and she does a lot of online programming that became very popular during the pandemic, especially with folks who couldn't and, and did not want to get out. Uh, and diabetes prevention, that's another thing that they're working on as far as that goes. Then finally, like Monica Jean has a podcast, it's very popular and she has a broad reach for that. And that's all in agriculture. The beginning farmer series is on that. So we have the direct and then we have the indirect and, and there's some totals quite a few.
Alright, so you just need a motion to amend that budget and?
Don't move.
Yeah, I'll second up.
The move down.
Right, I have.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then I would, I would ask, do, do you want this clean copy or do you want to submit a copy that you have for signature and I, you can just send it to our office? Okay, good deal.
I worked out of like, uh, look at the map. Uh, out of D, then or?
Oh, you're looking at the map. So District Eight is a district. I did put that.
Eight, so you're, you're out of District Eight, which is Midland, Braxton, Mount Tom, Ione, Clinton, then it goes down to Eaton and Kingdom.
Yeah, these six counties here in the middle of the state. That's correct.
Was it like divided up a little bit of population wise?
Well, we have agreements with all eighty-three counties in the state. So um, we divide it administratively into these um, fourteen districts. And so District Eight is the district of Gracha Counties and I'm the district director for those six counties.
I remember a few years ago, my, my doctor made me take a a diabetes uh, class in Michigan State.
Through Extension.
Uh, e- e- extinction. And they gave us coupons for farmer's market.
Right.
In St. Louis, to buy fresh fruit and vegetables. And, but, but they even gave us a, a membership to Elma College Rec.
Okay.
Actually, it's in the swimming pool.
Yeah, there's, there's different grants that, that are available, uh, like Double Up Food Bucks is one of those to make uh, healthy food more accessible in farmer's market. So that's an agreement with the Farmer's Market Association of Michigan. So we're very active in, in those, especially our health and nutrition educators.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Alright, thanks so much.
If equalization?
As far as the equalization position authority, uh, I did submit that memo in conjunction with Keegan. So I can present that.
Okay, sure.
Well, what we're looking at here is, is Keegan and I have, I've been looking to optimize the Gracha County Equalization Office in, in any way possible that we can. And he approached me a couple of weeks ago with uh, an offer from the city of Elma to create the joint position between the city and the county for in in assessing slash equalization, um, let's see, a clerk in field support. Um, and before I get into the details, this is what we would be asking from the board. We would be asking for authorization to replace the current equalization clerk, um, authority, which is a one point O FTE full-time employee with a point five FTE contracted employee, um. And, and then to move into an agreement with the city of Elma to share this position uh, with their assessing needs. Uh, the memo attached. Uh, gives a little bit of the background about the conversations that we had with the city of Elma and how it would benefit both the city and the county for uh, looking for a, 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 a employee that we could have working forty hours a week when needed for each of the entities. With the, with the understanding that they would be working fifty percent for each, um, each municipality. The idea is that they would be contracted at fifty percent for the city of Elma and then contracted at fifty percent for the county of Gracha. And in doing so, uh, in that manner, we, we would not have to offer benefits for that because it would be legally two part-time jobs. Um, the current authorization that we have for the equalization clerk costs approximately fifty-six thousand dollars a year. Uh, should we move to this new model, uh, with this new position? We would be looking at about twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, so we have an expected savings of about thirty-one thousand dollars. And Keegan and I, um, we're, we're willing to field any questions that you would have about it. This position would be located in the city of Elma. Primary duties would be data entry, um, making sure that needs within our equalization system are updated and, and fielding phone calls. And when possible, also assisting in the field with Gracha County too.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How would you go about submitting publication for this position and who would do the interview?
Uh, the interview would be conducted jointly by um, Elma and Gracha County. I would expect Keegan would be involved as a representative for Gracha County for that. And as far as a publication, uh, we would publicize it uh, the same way that we would any other Gracha County employee.
We'd all use those same, same advertising entities, if you?
Yep, on the same avenues, um, as far as uh, operator ones that we use or, you know, through our website, through Indeed. Anything that the, the city of Elma wouldn't do that we do, we would add on to that.
The city of Elma do the screening or does Tony do the screening or together?
Um, my understanding is it would be together. I would expect that Keegan would have um, representation at every.
I'm saying that because Eric's sitting right there. So I, I want, I want nods from both of them.
Uh, we would also post the position in different uh, like assessing the equalization groups, uh, that work around the state to just uh, get that right, uh, I basically.
Well, I know who the boss is gonna be, so she's well respected. So I've got no worries there. I'm just worried about who's gonna have the say and who says what and because we just, we, we want it to work.
Absolutely.
We want it to be fair.
Guess my only question is, where's the city of Elma? Where are they at with this?
Over on board with, with that, um, Kathy Rose.
Has it been to your, you guys have been to your council?
Sure.
Has it been to your council?
Um, I'm replacing a part-time person and this is a part-time position. So
You don't have to do, you don't do that.
I don't have to get a special approval about, uh, the other discussion. If, if this can work out, then I would have my commission because I would need a full-time person and this position that I'm replacing was part-time.
So you're the council on the slot?
Yes, yeah. And this seems, if they can benefit, you know, a lot of the equalization department and us. So obviously we also do the um, Kathy Rosen also is the assessor for St. Louis. So yeah, this person would be helping out there too.
And we're actually doing the reverse, aren't we? We have a full-time person that left and we're gonna make that position part-time or change that. Is it gonna change or that position basically gonna be the same?
It will be going from full-time to part-time.
Yeah, but I'm looking for the description of the position. Does that change or is it gonna be the same?
Yeah, it'd be a part-time job here.
Yeah.
Job there.
Yeah, but I was saying what they do.
Yeah.
I'll do it fairly sound.
Okay, okay.
You're probably using Kathy to put that program together.
Okay.
So it looks like we need the motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter into the agreement with the city of Elma.
I'll second up.
The move is supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Alright, thank you. Um, so now Keegan.
Alright, so the Gracha County Equalization Department has completed its review of the two thousand twenty-three assessment rolls of sixteen townships and three cities of Gracha County. The two thousand twenty-three Gracha County Equalization Report prepared by the Gracha County Equalization Department is submitted for approval and adoption. The recommended county equalized value for two thousand twenty-three is two billion, five hundred ninety-nine million, eight hundred five thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. And so instead of uh, going through uh, each page of the equalization report, since it's got a lot of small numbers and everything, I put for uh, together a PowerPoint presentation to maybe make it a little easier to go through. And uh, so the first part here is just the uh, equalization department. Um, as we just talked about, we're looking to fill a position. So right now it's myself and Jamie Gutierrez, um, our appraiser. And so this is just gonna go like a little bit through last year's assessment cycle and some of the brief, uh, or some of the significant events from last year. For our two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three equalization studies, we inspected and valued over seven hundred parcels in the studies. And then there's a breakdown of the uh, parcels that we physically inspected for each class. And then on top of the physical inspections, we also reviewed over a thousand residential, commercial, industrial sales. And then we also do a physical inspection on every sale that we use in our land value and ECF analysis. Uh, so it is, uh, the studies each year are quite a project. Um, the first couple of years when I was here, we did contract those out, but now we do them all completely in-house and save a pretty good deal of money on not contracting that workout. So I'm really happy that we're able to continue doing that.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
When you say we complete a physical inspection, that means that you send you or part of one of your staff or whatever out there to actually inspect the property?
Yep, exactly. So we uh, go up to the property, we measure it, we uh, basically take a sketch out with us. And so we make sure that the measurements and the information we have on the sketch is still correct. And then we take it to our database and uh, update anything that's changed and make sure.
So now, so, so they're, the, the information that they have is probably off the GIS system and they go there or how, how do they know where, where they're going?
So actually, um, last year we got a new program called Pivot Point and it's a, uh, it's an app that goes on a tablet and uh, basically it's all online now. It connects directly to our database. And so when we go out there, it'll pull up our, the parcel, has the sketch, has the images, everything, all the information that we have in our database, we can take in the field with us now.
Good. So you know where you're at.
Yeah, yep. And it keeps track of all our employees and everything like that. So it's really a good system.
Good.
Uh, so along with the equalization studies, we complete a personal property audit. Um, for the personal property review, we separate the personal property into two categories, personal property and wind turbines. Uh, for each township, we uh, do an audit of ten percent of the personal property statements for each township. Uh, but as far as the wind turbines, we do a hundred percent study each year. Um, just because they make up such a large chunk of value, we find it best to monitor and review uh, each year, mine every year. Uh, and so starting in two thousand twenty-three, uh, the state is no longer gonna do AMAR reviews, which is the audit of minimum assessment requirements. Uh, they're gonna switch to what they call the assessment role audit. And um, these two audits, they're very similar. They're in the past, the AMARS have been on every five years. They're gonna continue to do the new audit every five years. Um, and it's very similar to the AMAR review. It's just a little bit more in-depth and uh, some of the requirements of this new audit are a little different. So they changed the name and they're doing new classes around the state to kind of teach everybody about it. Um, but Gracha County will be going through their audit in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I have taken the class on the audit, but I plan on taking it again with all the equalization staff just to make sure that we can help every single assessor pass and not have to deal with any uh, failures of the audit or anything like that. Alright, moving on to the actual equalization report. Uh, these are the recommended uh, county equalized values for each class of property in Gracha County. And I won't read through each number. I'll just look at those. And feel free to stop me anytime with any questions.
Can you count, you're in like Elma, record, you have to count that, that R P two, is that counted in or is that separately?
It's all counted in, yep. Yep. So what we do is you break it down by class instead of individual townships. So uh, for, in the equalization report on pages six through eleven, these pages show the uh, past and uh, present uh, assessed and taxable values and also their percent change. Um, it's kind of small on there, uh, but that's just a breakdown of the percent changes for the real and the personal property. You can see that the uh, real property all uh, increased by quite a decent. You can see that the, uh, real property all, uh, increased by quite a decent amount, especially the residential class, while the personal property, uh, decreased a fair amount from last year to this year. I, in all townships, the, uh, residential class for the market value increased from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand three, most notably with, uh, Fulton, Newark, North Shade and Wheeler. They all, the market value for those or for the rest of the class, it's been over twenty percent. Yeah, it keeps on going up.
Who determines that?
Like, uh, the, basically, so what happens is the assessor sets the values on each property. Uh, but when we do our study, our study is basically trying to figure out what the market is doing. And then we relay that study to the assessors, telling them what the market's doing, where their values need to go. And then the assessor adjusts, uh, their values to fit the market, basically. So the, uh, increases there are basically to keep their values in line with what the market's doing.
I see.
Uh, as far as the personal property, um, there was a pretty significant decrease in the personal property, and this is basically due to the depreciation tables of the wind turbines. Um, every year that they up, they keep, uh, decreasing in value. So while the real property increased by seven point four percent, the personal property decreased by, uh, six point three percent. Uh, this just shows a breakdown of the, uh, different classes of property. As you can see, Greshit County is still primarily, uh, agricultural. With, uh, residential and personal property still holding a pretty good weight of value. Uh, this is just the, um, value trends for the past, uh, fifteen years. This, uh, this is on page fourteen of the equalization report is basically a breakdown of the estimated revenue that will come from the new taxable value. Um, and like the other one, I won't read through each one of these, but basically that's an estimation of what each, uh, millage will bring in with the new taxable value. Uh, this is a one point eight percent increase from the two thousand twenty-two, uh, estimated revenue. And this is based on last year's mileage rates. Uh, so on pages sixteen through thirty-four, this is a breakdown of each township. Uh, it shows their, um. Test value and taxable values for the years two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the largest, uh, growth. Um, was in Fulton Township at fourteen point zero four percent. Um, with their residential class increasing by twenty point nine three percent. And, uh, Hamilton Township actually had the largest decrease in value at five point three seven. Uh, their industrial personal property, which is the wind turbines, decreased by nine point four four percent.
Yeah, they were one of the first.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, wind farm.
Yep, and they've got quite a few of them. And, uh, since it's a smaller township, those, the industrial personal property class makes up a large portion of their value. So at the end of the equalization report is the L forty twenty-four, and this is a breakdown of the county equalized valuations. Uh, basically, this is the report that the state needs to make sure that county equalization has been completed. This is the report that you have to sign to. Uh, basically certify all of the, uh, equalized valuations in the county. Um, is there any, uh, questions on any of that? Sorry, I went kind of fast. I.
I have a couple of questions for you, Keegan. Um, you mentioned that on an annual basis, you do a one hundred percent audit review of the turbines in the county. Can you explain that process, please?
So we ask all of the, uh, assessors to turn in their personal property statements, uh, each year, including all of the wind turbine personal property statements. So we can review them, look at how they entered them into their database, make sure they're correct. And then we take all of those values and we put them into a big spreadsheet. Um, that way we can look at the, uh, depreciation table they're using and make sure that their values are falling in line with that depreciation table. Basically make sure they're not using just any values willy-nilly, making sure that they're the correct values. Um. Yeah, and then we, um, we have, uh, like maps and, uh, other reference material from Greater Greshit that we use to go out and. Make sure that basically all the turbines are mapped to where they're supposed to be on the roll, everything like that.
So you do verify that the turbines are in the parcels that they're reported on?
Yep, we do.
Have you ever gone out and done this?
Yep.
Can you explain the process?
Uh, yeah, basically we just, uh, we print a page from the, um, the plat book of the township. And then we have a marker, we mark out all the turbines where they're at in the township, and then we just drive back and forth checking them off as we go along.
So Greater Greshit, we were informed that Greater Greshit compiles their turbine farm information from the developers, from the permits office. And with the state of Michigan.
Okay.
Uh, they report that currently they have three hundred and thirty-five turbines that, um, you know, that. That are being factory now. Is that a number that you have confirmed or have confirmed?
Yep, I believe that's the exact same number we have in our, uh, spreadsheet. And that comes all, uh, from the township assessors', uh, databases, where we pulled that from.
So that would match what the developers have told us and would match what permits office would have and what the state has.
Yep.
Um, can you also confirm that Wheeler Township, uh, would, which may be a little confusing? Uh, they have fifty-six turbines within Wheeler Township, but they are located on fifty-four parcels?
Yep, so there's two parcels that have two wind turbines on the same parcel. So in our spreadsheet, they're only listed as one parcel number, but we just right next to it, we have like a note that says two turbines.
So it could be confusing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, what you've just reported is that you are satisfied that what I call the gold turbines, we don't have any.
Uh, I would not think so, no.
So when we hear that there's turbines missing or lost. We have confirmed by four different sources that the turbines are where they're supposed to be and are there. Is that correct?
Uh, we have never found any that's not be exactly where we think they are.
So I hope this puts this to bed. Because if it doesn't, we're gonna have a problem.
Well, we'll see.
There's no see to it. It's done. So. I'm done being accused of things. I've done being put down.
Nobody's accused you of anything.
Uh, Jan, I beg to differ. I'll bring people to the next meeting and they'll tell you what you said.
Please do.
I will.
Please.
I will, because you know what you said. Many times. And when you go to places around the county, they say, how come the county people, the county are stealing money? Where did they get that from, Jan?
I don't know who you're talking about because I pretty much kept, I have been working on, um, I've been on the GIS through the state. And, um, I'm going by what I, the paperwork that I get from Greater Greshit. And according to the Greater Greshit and what I've been able to find, there's more wind turbines. But what I am doing is, um, it's taking time because I've had two, three funerals here that's come up. And what I'm doing is putting down the first, when they first came in, I entered all of them. And also by the parcel number, by, uh, so when I got the number off the wind turbine, that pretty much matched up. And I actually started because one of the townships asked me, how many did we have? And I told them and they said that they thought we had more. And so that's how I got started. And I, I'm not gonna say we should anything.
You're saying a lot of things and we need to know. We're an open body here.
I don't have to tell anything I don't want. You don't, you don't own me. You do not tell me what I can do.
You answer to the public and I answer to them.
No, I'm going to answer to the public. And there is more people now involved in this that is, uh, with me on this. So, um, out of respect for them.
When do we expect a report from you, Jan?
I, I'm working on it. I've.
You've been working on it for six years.
No, but twelve years, really.
Um, but I've only been here for seven, so I don't know how I got all this money.
I, I don't even know what you're talking about. All I'm doing, all I'm gonna do is I'm going to take and, um, get this put together and then I'll bring it in. And actually, I've got other people now involved, so I'm working with them. Because I, it takes a lot of time and I, between the funerals I've been going to and my, um, two jobs, it's a little crazy right now.
Jan, you mentioned to me that you were gonna have this wrapped up the second meeting.
Oh, I thought I did, but my mother passed away, my brother-in-law's passed away, my nephew just passed away.
So when are you gonna have, so when can we expect this report, Jan?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I don't think I'm gonna. And I promise, I wouldn't worry about it. I'm gonna, I'll have it done. I've been working on.
I'm not, I'm not worried about it at all.
One thing is I'm making sure that I don't make any mistakes.
But you've made this body look foolish for many years by saying things the way you do.
Well, I've pretty well kept it quiet. There's only four people I talked to. Um, one of the things is, um, I'm making sure that I do this right. And I'm also looking at, well, one thing, my printer broke down. That was another issue. But you know something, I'm not, um, I'm, I have to live, I have to work. I have to make a living too.
You've accused quite a few people of some wrongdoing and and it's about time you came across to, with any proof that you have.
I will. You're the ones that brought this up. And so I'm just.
Oh, you're the one that's been going through the community saying things.
I don't know who you're talking to because I.
You know, you do too.
The only one I've talked to is, I've talked with Angie and I don't think, and Angie and I are good friends and she.
You know, whether you, you call on the phone.
And that's probably because you're tapped into my phone and I realize you've also tapped.
We tapped into her phone. I want, uh, people out in, in YouTube land, she just accused us of tapping into her phone. I want it on record.
That policy.
I want it on record. I want it on record.
It is. You put in a policy. By the way, I made a hundred of those policies. I've been passing those out. Because it wasn't me that knew about it. It was people that was fixing my computer asked me that I had all these other people on my computer. And I said, no, I'm the only one. I live alone. So how could there be other?
Well, you're beating on that and you just refuse to let anybody do anything for you.
Right. We had a meeting and we passed a policy that we never got to read, said in that policy.
I wrote it.
That the county could go into our computers, personal computers, our personal phones, and to our emails, text messages and our.
Gotta be county-owned.
County-owned. I don't own one, but you're in there.
I mean, we asked you to sort of.
This happened before this last computer. This has happened a while back.
We're gonna have this technology that's happening to your personal.
I'm, I'm telling.
Or phone.
I have three people, one of them, I, I'm more than happy.
They're willing to bring them in here. Let's talk to them. Bring your proof. You keep saying these things, Jan. Honest to goodness.
Or eventually.
Let's get going because you were gonna sue me five years ago.
No, I'm not. I didn't even mention you. But first of all, I'm gonna do it on my time. Not on your time. I'm, I don't answer to you. You guys don't vote for me and I don't answer to you.
I'm just a disruptive factor in this commission for many years. And she goes out and she says things. And I'd like everybody that's listening to this now, contact. Our administrator with any information that you may have, because we're gonna talk, talk about this and we're gonna talk about it in public forum, because going around everybody's back is wrong.
You sound, you sound guilty. Why are you guilty on this?
I'm getting tired of being confused with stuff all the time.
You know, you know something?
There she goes.
I said I was gonna bring it all in and put it up. I don't know who's behind this, really. Uh, I don't, I don't know. I'm just telling you that. I had a township come to me about it back in two thousand thirteen.
Well, I wasn't even here.
I weren't here, so I don't understand why.
Because you've been.
Why are you?
Right. This is a circular argument with you, uh, but you just won't come to realize that you cannot do things behind people's backs.
Tell you what, if you can get someone to come over and fix my printer, I have a brand-new printer. I looked up to my computer. I don't know how to do that. I could get moving on to this. But right now I'm going to the library to get my copies made and that takes, have to be, they have to be all done. I have to be.
I'm trying, I'm wanting to pass a resolution for, for making a motion. Correct right now.
Yeah.
That if you can bring this information, we'll fix your computer, we'll fix your printer, we'll fix everything you've got. But if you cannot bring it.
I'm bringing it when I get it finished. I've got, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. In fact, I'll be working on it this weekend. Soon as I get it done. It takes a long time.
That's no, that's no answer. When are you gonna get it done? Make yourself a, a plan and get it done.
Well, I, I did. I thought it'd be done by now. I thought I was gonna have it done by April, but I have not worked on it at all.
So you just.
Listen, my family's more important. My family comes first.
You've had years, you've had years of this, Jan. It's not just lately. You've had years of this.
I thought I was kind of done when I did the first six townships.
Two thousand twelve, you brought allegations against the permit department in this county and the state, yes, you did. The police department, the, the state police, you, you went to the state.
I never went to the state police in two thousand twelve.
Yes, they did.
You say now I know you're.
She, uh, having attorney general.
That's right.
The attorney general's off.
That's right. And the state police.
Not in two thousand.
Attorney general.
Not in two thousand twelve. I've got.
Pretty close to it. All right. And then you accused the, uh, administrator in two thousand fourteen, she worked here?
I think so.
Yeah, you, you accused the minute, you, you went to the attorney general again, accused the administrator of foul play. You've accused people all the time you've been here.
I've never accused anybody. I had the.
All right.
Information.
I sat, I even sat in a meeting with them.
Let's say something. There was two other commissioners that were with me. So don't think I was by myself on this. There was.
Well, Jan, I just, let's, we'd like to have you get this wrapped up.
I will, but I.
I hear you. I will be coming else. So I'd like to have you get it wrapped up as soon as possible.
I'm not gonna hurry for your account. I.
Like I, like I told you, when you said you were gonna get it wrapped up in March.
I got, I did.
Give me the day so I can get the police here. So when they handcuff these people, we can just take them out.
They're unkept.
Well, you got, everybody's a corrupt thing. So I mean, that's what you said to me. I said, you're gonna wrap her up in the other month. Okay, let's move on.
Well, who is, I don't know who it is.
And then, then, well, I'm gonna, I'm thinking I'm done. We've had four different bodies tell us tonight. Through or before, and each of them confirmed that we have X number of windmills, four hundred and fifty-four, am I right? Three hundred and fifty-four?
Three hundred and fifty-five.
I'm sorry, three, three hundred and forty-five, three hundred and forty-five. And then we got one person out of four different credible bodies, one being the state of Michigan, that says that's wrong. Now, folks, we have a problem. And I think we know what the problem is. And that's all I'm gonna say.
All right, we would, yes, J four.
You do accept this.
Oh. I'm still here, Keith?
Yeah, right. Uh, then I just need a, uh.
You gotta sign it to the.
Uh, yeah, I just need a signature from the board on that forty twenty-four to send it. So.
We need to approve that, that everything's, we gotta send it to the state.
Don't move.
Board.
The move is supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Um, the next is just really the village of Perryton and the, um, North Shade Township. There are just these, uh, agreements. And some of these were prepared last year. And, uh, like, as I said earlier, that they just kind of fell through the cracks and no fault of anybody, just fell through the cracks in the transition from. Going to Tracy, to Chris, to really now the lady, yeah, Buildings Department is kind of handling that.
Deandra.
Deandra. So it just, these two fell between the cracks. Uh, they're all set to go. Uh, we just need approval. We can do them both at the same time?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the, uh, agreements with, uh, Perryton, the village of Perryton and North Shade Township.
Don't move. Supporter.
Moves is supported. All in favor?
All right.
Close, okay. And then we'll sign those and they're gonna start as of today and they're gonna, they get, I think it's two for this year then, right? That one is. Complaints, complaints for this year starting.
Oh, I don't remember what.
Yeah, I think it's six. All righty. Uh, we're to the airport resolution operations counter. Yep, just to give you a little background on the airport resolution. Uh, approximately sixty days ago, Commissioner Smith gave me thirty days. To, uh, work with Eric Ripley from the city of Elma to, to come together with an agreement before an agreement. Um, for the airport operations, for the transfer of the airport operations from the city of Elma to Greshit County. Um, we actually made a joke earlier today, Eric and I, uh, when we called each other that. He is one of the first professional phone numbers that I now have in my head memorized, uh, because we've been working on this. Nearly every day, uh, going back and forth, uh, uh, trying to get this, uh, to move along. Um, so what we have in front of you is the latest version, uh, that we have put together. Um, I know that, that some of you, uh. If, if you've checked the email, you, you, you've seen this, this version. Um, this version is yet to go before the complete, uh, commission for the city of Elma, but, uh, we're hoping that that will, will soon be the intention. But, uh, what I'm asking i- is that tonight, that, that this board would review this. Resolution and pass it. And what this would do would be just to give some, some guidelines. For when the airport authority, uh, goes to the lawyer that has been hired. Um, and asks them to put together the contract. And, um, other legal documents for transferring the operations from the city of Elma to Greshit County. Um, and I can go ahead and, and read through this for you, if, if that's what you would like, Sam. Or would you?
You've all seen that. I think everybody's seen it, um. The only thing we changed was the last paragraph, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And that was three meetings ago?
Yeah.
I guess my sad point, you know, Eric, I want to just commend both of you guys to trying to put this thing together. I mean, you're in tough spots. You're the number two guy, he works for this board, you work for your board, you have a mayor system. It's my understanding the mayor hasn't even given it to the, your commission yet, because he hasn't gone through it or whatever. I've been doing this since like September, you know, and I guess I just look at it as that. One of the beginning meetings, I didn't wake up in the morning and said, let's go get that airport because we think we can do a lot with it. And I just, I, I'm concerned about it. But I guess I don't, our last really stand on this was by the end of February, we were done. I mean, that was our last, well, by the end of February, we were done. And we've just kind of penciled along and pieced along and you guys have been working every day on this thing and and we're still waiting for the mayor and your commission. And I don't know where everybody else is at, but I was rough front of him when I first said he thought there was something wrong about us taking it and trying to get it for a dollar. We had it, he thought we had intentions in mind and I was real serious about. We'll give you the same deal. You can take it for a buck. And I'm really probably to that point, you know, myself personally. I don't know where everybody else is at.
I guess I thought we were, I thought this was a done deal tonight. I thought they were both.
No, the mayor's not even presented it to his council yet. So we'll have to wait on that.
Okay, because I was assuming that this was all done and.
You meant a week ago?
I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah.
We meet next Tuesday.
But you had this, you had this at your last meeting. I mean, he had it before the last meeting and.
And.
Because I saw it a couple of weeks ago.
This latest draft was presented to Eric, I think either the day before or the day of his meeting.
Okay. Like I said, I just don't have in front of the whole. And I can't, I don't want to speak to the whole commission until they, they see the draft. So, you know, I appreciate being able to work with Chris on this.
Yep.
And we have been diligently, and I think we've made progress. And I think we've made, and we have, I think we've made progress.
I, I think by you guys working together on this and whether, however it walks it out, I think it'll be a great collaboration for, for this county and Alma to work together. I mean, you, you kind of know each other well about going through this stuff, but I think it's great. Great for our county. I think it'd be great for the city of Alma too. I just don't know if this deal is the deal.
On all of these, there's a lot. And is, is there any particular one that you know that might be questioned at this point?
It's really down to semantics at this point. It really is. I thought, you know, the last one, we thought we were done. I meant at my second, the second session, I thought we were over, we didn't go. And then we came back with the, the, it was the last paragraph and added three. Everyone was, you know, my discussion was this very good. And, but to get in front of the other commissioners, you know, in a session that we're trying to do this in a way where that everyone feels comfortable with showing respect for the other side to do. So there's nothing, you know, it's all awkward, like she said. Ideally, and this is my belief and I know our group, which does, is that the airport itself would be better run as a county, county airport. The, the long-term viability of it, that's what needs to happen. And so I believe we're right there. I'm accustomed to this all taken care of. And then maybe for probably decades or, and this, you know, can just be a, a memory of, you know, it was how we got here.
Somebody else's memories.
Probably be a nightmare.
And sometimes, you know, it's, it's, like I said, I appreciate it. And like I said, the mayor's talents to me too, appreciate the work being done. And I don't think this is for not, and I do understand where the board is coming from. And it's not believable. I wish it was done a few months ago, or more than a month, a few months ago. But that's where I'm at. I mean, my commission next Tuesday.
Tomorrow you have a. You know what the agenda is. I hope you do. Anything that we can talk about tomorrow?
Yep, we have.
Sammy, we have.
This topic on the agenda, Sam, you're representative on the board there.
Well, and I just like to say, I echo Sam's frustration. I mean, I started down this road almost three years ago. You were sitting there when we, when we said that, you know, and I was the chairman at the time. I said, let's let the county take care, look at it. And we looked at it, we looked at it hard. We actually paid for a study to have done. So we did it properly, I thought.
And to
have our motives questioned is a little bit disturbing. You know, we want to make things better. And I've told you that many times. I think the county's in a position to make the airport do a little better. Actually, hopefully in five years pay for itself. And we have a plan and you, and you know that. I'd hate to scuttle it at this late date, but we've already voted in, in February to say after February, we're going to do this anymore. But we keep bringing this back to the table. But right now, I'm, I'm saying, and I think I'm a fair person. If this doesn't happen within, by Tuesday evening next week, it's not going to happen. I just can't. And I don't like to hold that over your head, but I know Sam's not going to be happy. I know Dave's not going to be happy. Jan's not going to be happy. Him's not going to be happy and I'm certainly not going to be happy because we've tried, we've tried, tried and tried.
And I look at it as maybe they have a better plan and that's okay. As long as it stays a viable.
It doesn't matter to us. For me, me personally, I don't think else, but I think airport needs to be here. But if you've got a better plan, you've got a plan down that you want to do it. That's great with us.
With me.
I, I think we've been a long time coming. We spent money, you know, on this report, a study and just talked to a lot of people over the last six months. And we backed up over just some property dispute stuff, you know, it's always going to be an airport and nobody's building hotels or anything else, you know. But I, if, if, if if the mayor and your commission has a better plan to operate it, I think that's okay. I think it's good for the airport as long as the airport's the winner here. And apparently that must be what it is because nobody seems on that side to be driving to try to help get this thing done. You know. All the respect.
Except you.
Yeah, all, except you. All had respect, anything. I did, you know, like I said, I had two weeks ago, almost. You know, I had, you know, they had that, then I got struck. So sometimes it takes, like I said, we've come too far, I think, from both sides of both missions to, or hands up as the best, the best option for the airport and for not just the city of Alma citizens, but the county citizens. It is for it to be a county, county run airport. And I don't think anybody would disagree with that. It's obviously, there would be interest there. We'll have a meeting on Tuesday. And it's going to fall, land, doing the right thing for the airport. And for the county, me and for the city. So it's, it's been obviously a long time coming, but.
I know we've been saying that for a while now, but we do, we do believe it. We believe that we are very close in the process.
Then the other thing, we'll have a contract drawn up by the lawyer and then we'll have to agree to that. I mean, we're going to, I don't think this dance is over. You know, it's not really cut and dry. It's talking about how we're going to wrap this up in thirty years or whenever, or somebody else is. What, what, what people had to input, they'll have, both sides will still have input, you know. But we moved to this pocket again, it was about, Chris had come and mentioned about, maybe it'd be a fire station or something up there. That was great, you know. But it's still about some control and that type of stuff and. I just think that we're, I still believe that if we're the one putting in the coin and taking the, taking the risk to get it done, we probably ought to be operating it. And if you wanted to do that, you ought to be operating. We shouldn't have no say, you know. And our February twenty-second, end of February deadline did say that. We'll give it to you with no say for a dollar. And that's where we left it. So it's, and as I, I can't commend you both enough to try to get this thing done, you know, and working on it and you're busy with. I mean, Chris just rolls into the job. You've got a lot to do. And I understand that. I commend you both.
Where does that leave us with the resolution?
I move we adopt this resolution.
We can't adopt it until they okay it though, can we?
Oh, yeah. This is our resolution back to them. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I support it.
Move and support it to adopt this resolution and wait on, wait on the city to let us know.
We have to have a roll call.
Please.
Okay.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Can you repeat? Can you read that?
To approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash two nine nine Grashit County Airport Operations.
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No. Okay, motion class.
Can I ask why you said no or is that not right?
I think I just explained, I'm tired, I'm, I'm, I'm.
That's the ball. He's sending a message.
Talk about it for a long time. So consideration of unfinished business. Getting, well, no, that'd be a T M.
We gotta go to finance.
Recession, we have to adjourn this meeting and recess into finance.
Take a motion that we reserve. You know what I'm saying? I go to the finance meeting, support, I couldn't get recess out.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay, we're now, you're working, picking it over?
Okay. Chris.
Sir, I have the finance report for you. I'll run through quickly. We have not been approached for any more drain free payments. We still have some authorization for that this fiscal year. ARP funds so far to date, over seven point nine million, we have distributed and three point oh, just under three point four million of that. So we're starting to approach that fifty percent. Area, a couple of new project requests had come in just this week. One for the village of, I'm sorry, Fulton Township for some well work that they were doing out there and another one for one quarter's operations for the Hero Center for their third quarter for this fiscal year. Our late audit is approaching being wrapped up. Woodhill Group has nearly completed the reconciliation of the delinquent tax fund. They came in and they have fixed a lot of our automated entries and processes all throughout the revenue side of our financial system, which for the most part runs through the treasurer's office. I was very impressed with Colleen, you know, this company. She came in and I think within probably a half hour, she had called me just to make sure that, you know, can I delete this fund? Can I reroute this this way? So, yeah, she came in and she, she was really getting a large quantity of work done. And everything that she is doing is to improve the processes that we previously had in place, which not only will make the work easier, but there will be significantly less work to do of which also can create mistakes. So I think it's going to be really, really good. In fact, I would like to talk to her about potentially coming back and helping me with some of our processes that we have in administration. That is a conversation for a later date. Our O P E B system balance in the O P E B has gone up since last reported. On the year, we're at four point nine percent. Respectively, the S and P on the year is up eight point one. That includes my finance report for tonight. Does anybody have any questions? Going to move on to cash balance. Selective funds as we do that. We're looking at our general fund. At the end of February, we were sitting at just under seven point three million. And now we are sitting at six point six and a half for the March, for a drop of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. If you look at the historical trend, that's, that's a, a pretty common dip in reserves for that particular month. COVID recovery fund, you see that project expenses are trickling out of there.
I guess where it's going down, where is that money going?
The COVID recovery fund?
Yeah.
Those are, those are, that's funding our ARP projects.
Oh, okay.
And I will give you a moment to review our check register for the month of March. And while you're doing that, I will pull up the accounts payable system in anticipation of any questions that you might have.
I do the A, it's A one site development incorporation for sixty eight thousand.
A one site developed corporation is a contractor that is frequently used by the Drain Commission.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey, for asking me that question earlier today.
I just double check and I don't want to, I just wanted to make sure.
Midland County Juvenile Care Central or?
Center.
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 Yeah.
Send something. Five, five thousand four hundred twenty-four.
Can we rent a?
That's something for the staff, pay the staff.
We rented like a room there.
It's housing. It's housing where we, some.
But it's not just for the bed, it's for supervision.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's for the house.
All of the services that you, all detention center for.
We, but we have several of them around the state that we, it just depends on what bed is open.
Yeah, well, we, I think we got this one under contract, as I recall, because we were taking the Friday, whoever had one open, we would just take them there. I think we contracted this one. You know, as I recall, we did the contract.
We were having so much trouble finding them.
Yeah.
Sheriff was devoting resources to bring people to Kalamazoo when we didn't have any open in Midland.
Okay, what about here on County E D C?
Oh, I think you asked that one last month.
I did?
Here in County E D C. Make a lot more sense when you see the actual bill that they come with. I'm going to guess that that is also a detention center. I think that's what the E D C stands for.
Did we take somebody there? That's why it's.
County, is it?
No, this is, this is in relation to the turbine depreciation lawsuit.
Oh, that's, that's, that's where MRACs. We, we pay that through, the MRAC through that, I believe.
Sure. I'm not seeing what the E D C, Economic Development Corporation, they're the ones that are taking care of the.
MRAC. Yep.
And here's.
The MRAC money goal.
This pin, is it pinny bone?
Bone.
Those. Yep, that is a.
Postage meter.
Our postage machine.
Oh, okay.
Michigan State Police, but why do we pay them?
We collect money through our court system.
The court.
For fines and. Fines and fees and. All of those fines and fees get split up and sent to specific places based on the law. And M S P collects some of that money also. On a monthly basis, we have to make M S P whole from what we've collected.
Garden Foods.
Michigan. We do deliver meals. To, for uh, seniors.
Would that be the food for the prison?
No, they have, they have their own canteen, I think.
Correct, canteen, thank you, George.
Okay, I have one. We've got it in here twice. The Emergency Service A U T H. That's in here twice.
That is um. These that are collected by the treasurer's office. Does that go through the treasurer? You, you don't collect them, you receipt them. And then you transfer them out to central dispatch. A monthly cert charge.
Oh, oh, cert charge, okay.
That was the one that came up last month. I was thinking about.
Should make a bill so I don't ask it originally.
That'd be great.
Okay, well, it keeps you on your chart, you should have. Michigan County Works. That's um, cop. That must be retirement.
If Sam is going to jumpstart on the revenue and expenditure report. Get that loaded up. So in the packet, I have also included the end of March revenue and expenditure report, and I'll give you a moment to. Go ahead and go through that. And I apologize, I see that. You have one date that's wrong in there. It still says February. It was always good to find those for me. That's the only thing to point out is you'll see that within our Fund Two Three One, the opioid fund. Uh, we did receive that second payment. It's reflective in our, in our system now. So our balance does sit at just under uh, two hundred and eleven dollars. Yes, if there are no questions, that would.
Most of these uh. Expenditures and checks, they're done on electronic. Faces and then you. Uh, then you say paper. Checks are, are actually written. The old fashioned way, but.
Well, they're printed.
Correct, yep. The A C H is electronic transfers. Um. We, we do make a push to have all vendors signed up for electronic. It's much quicker. Um. And frankly, it saves, saves time and money.
We spent many years trying to get everything A C H and we still have some vendors that.
You know, once COVID.
Don't want to deal with it.
Once COVID hit and the, the, the US Postal Service slowed down significantly and people, they, it'd take people two weeks to get. A check in the mail. We were able to convert to electronic off really quick during that period.
Okay, we're all, true, what's the questions for Chris?
Yes.
Treasurer's report.
Good evening. Uh, we have had some movement. On the investments, which is good. I will continue to see. See movement and will within the next couple of weeks. So things are, things are rolling along as far as that goes. As Chris said, we're very happy with the way that Woodhill is going. They are on track to have things. Wrapped up. When they had said that they would be wrapped up, they are. They're quite impressive as far as I'm concerned. They're doing, they're doing really very well. So. Uh, property tax settlement is. We're almost finished with that. We've just got a couple. Corrected reports that we're waiting on. So that's wrapping up. So everything. Everything seems to be, you know, coming to an end, which is good because I kind of feel like I've been running through tall grass for a little while, but. We're getting there. It's that time of year.
Foreclosures.
Foreclosures.
Um, are we up? Are we down?
We are down. We have nine.
Over, okay.
How many?
Kind of one time, right?
Yeah, but we had to, um, there was one that we had to pull because the legal didn't match what we had.
All right.
I have a question for you, Terry. So you have a foreclosure, that's for back taxes. What if they owe money on it? And who gets it? We don't get it. The bank would get it back, right?
If they owe a mortgage, that's through the sheriff's department. They take care of those auctions. Those sales.
Those are foreclosure sales.
Yeah, well, the reason I'm asking that is that the new job that Commissioner Murphy has now is that he goes out, he works for a company. That um. Mortgage company. And he has to go out and um, somebody can't pay their mortgage, probably don't pay their taxes. And so he sees if they're still there, if they've left and find out when they're leaving, takes pictures. He said that he's just one of several that's doing this and be, he has Grasha, Isabel and Claire. And he's doing about sixty-five to seventy a month.
Oh, boy, that's terrible. Yeah. Yeah, that would be mortgage foreclosures and that, that is not us. We are property tax.
Have um, taxes with the, the county too. So who would get, how would they do that? How would you get your money? Like, say somebody owes a lot of money and they can't.
It lots or depends. If they're escrowed, they would get the money and then, you know, pay the taxes.
Even the bank pays you? The bank pays you, the sheriff or the?
Well, they have the sheriff's sale that's happened right here in the, in the courthouse. Just on three steps, they're out right here in the building. And then. Most of them have a target price that they have to sell for. If it's going to be sold to someone, otherwise the bank.
Yep.
And the bank takes control of them. And it would be the bank that would then settle up on taxes. Or the new owner has to settle up on past taxes. Yeah, I can't.
The minimum, yeah, the minimum bits have the taxes in them.
Yes.
If you owe the bank fifty grand and taxes are ten grand, the minimum bit may be.
Time frame that has to transpire within sixty days.
Yeah, then this guy can get it back if he pays it or something.
Yep.
I think it's six months.
The sheriff getting involved is, in other words.
State statute is why we sell that. I mean, it's, trust me. I would rather that we didn't.
Yes, I know.
It's state statute, it's, it's called the sheriff's sale. That we have to hold.
Yeah, but I mean, if the, if the bank, if they owe the bank money. And they don't pay the bank and they don't pay the taxes. So how is the sheriff first?
No, so we don't ever get this.
No. They're just, they're just the strong arm.
Stilts, oh, okay.
By law, you have to.
There's a guy with a gun that goes and tells you, you gotta pay your bills.
I was surprised that he was, he was selling that. He was doing sixty-five to seventy. He's part-time doing that money.
That's unfortunate.
Hell, Shaffer.
Really sad, doesn't he? Yeah, he used, he used to. Any other questions?
No, especially all the cost.
They had a rate, I don't know, they had a hourly rate and a um, different rates that they said.
Might have the treasurer's budget.
That comes.
That money comes.
The delinquent tax. Fund. Because that's what she's working on. So that's what is going to come out.
The tax from the investment company, where is he?
He is.
He's over.
No, he's, he's here. Um, it was a medallion sticker issue, which I wasn't familiar with, but I've just learned about it. Um. And that's getting resolved. So that was, there was a glitch that there, apparently they weren't. Required during COVID and they've recently reinstated them. It's something that the transferring company has to have. It's like a proof of identity. That's, that's what I was told yesterday. So I reached out to the.
So he can't get any money from a company because he don't have a medallion stamp?
He didn't know. They didn't let him know that they needed it until just recently. They've been dragging their feet and dragging their feet and then just recently we learned that. Because it wasn't required during COVID because you couldn't have personal meetings. Now all of a sudden it's reinstated.
Well, medallion stamp is just like a notary stamp, except it's just. You gotta know him, you gotta find a guy, because insurance has to have them, certain people have.
So do we have a kind of a. Conclusion, maybe by meeting next month, this should.
Oh, yeah.
Will take place.
Yeah, I reached out to the bank and that's where we are. So.
So it looks like you're moving money into CDs, which is a pretty good rate, but. What's going to be left of this guy? For this, this investment guy?
He is um, everything that. Hang on just a second. All of, you see. Drive this, J P Morgan Chase, Sally Mae, U B S, um, Synchrony. M U F G Advantage. He's getting that. And um, the money from the hunting, the C D from the Huntington. Bank, and I'm not sure yet on mercantile. I'm sitting down with them next week.
He thinks he can do better than forty-five?
Which one are you looking at?
Looking at forty-five.
Forty-five.
Everything else. But does he think he can do better than forty-five and best?
People too, he's going to, it's competitive what he's doing. And that's not a fixed rate either.
That's a good rate. What we're getting, those forty-five, we're getting good rate.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. What's the timeframe on it? What do you know how long they're in for?
Yeah.
What?
Forty-five CDs, wherever you put them, or the numbers.
That's not.
The money we're going to.
No, no, those.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a C D.
Those are, those are, well, that's Michigan.
That's commercial paper down here, the M U F G and Michigan class. Yeah, that is. Um.
How much is C Ds going?
First time. Last I heard was like. Four point two five, maybe.
Four point two five?
I'm getting three point seven five.
I'm going for six. Somebody told me that.
Do you need a C D?
I have not heard that.
There were some treasury, there were some ten month treasury notes that went crazy for about three months.
But now is the time to move the money because there's, the interest rates are there. Um, they may go up a little bit. But I'm looking at the markets and I think it's going to get stabilized here.
Mm-hmm.
I think they're going to settle out. For the rest of the year. I don't see it going up or down very much.
My short knowledge of it is just because the Fed's trying to slow inflation down and raising the rate.
Yeah.
And that, that's what it is. When you got. Over the years, when I look at it, you got a Democrat in the House split. You really know business is going to happen, you know?
No.
So you get another year and a half.
But anyway, there is movement, movement, and we're going to continue to split. So.
Okay.
These are going where we want them to go.
Yeah.
So. Anybody else? Silence.
Chris?
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So we're completed with the agenda. And so I would make a motion that we go back into support. At our meeting.
We'll support you go back into regular session. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion that we pay the bill. Or?
You want to support and pay the bills? All in favor?
Okay.
Any additional public comment? Anybody out there, ma'am?
No, nobody else is connected.
You?
A long way to say that, but I came there.
So just. Tell those guys to walk around the building, walk around the clock, hurry up.
Just to see that look on your face. Under Sheriff Sopsey with the Sheriff's Department, uh, last month, I believe. When I was here, I told you we were getting ready to have this large scale operation. Um, we had it. Obviously, you all know, we did not find Mr. Vandermark when we were uh, doing that large scale operation. However, it was a very successful. Operation in that, for something of that magnitude, I had lots of police officers and firefighters that had been in this county a long time before. Like, they've never seen anything like that transpire. Uh, Mother Nature wasn't our friend that day. We had to recall some people were all of our searchers. There was a lightning strikes in the area, but eventually we were able to search the area. Um. We unfortunately did not find Mr. Vandermark and then last. Wednesday. Um. Is you all, I'm sure now, or have seen in the paper, heard it on the news somewhere. Anyhow, uh, he was found in Hamilton Township. Um, many miles from. Ithaca, some say eight, some say nine miles to the Grove Flies, from where he was last seen. Um. He was deceased. He was found on a farm that the couple. That lived there are elderly and they're spending their winter in Florida. And the man who does their lawn maintenance. Um, is the one who discovered uh, his body. So anyhow, um, that has brought some. Form of closure. I know our detectives are still following up on, um, they, they just talked with his sister yesterday. So anyhow, um.
They're doing an autopsy.
Yep, the autopsy has came back. There was, um, there's, they won't do their final. Assessment until after the toxicology, do some of the decomposition and things that work. So they wanted to, to wait down there. So. Um, that's what's been going on there. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with Chris a lot more than Chris and I probably wanted to work with each other here recently, but. Um, it's been a pleasure getting to work with you more and, and know you more. I know that the staff will appreciate that you're willing to start looking at. Contract negotiations a little early because I hear about it every single day that I'm at the office. So I know they will be happy to hear that. Um, other than that. Um, we have issues, issues. I know we have issues with drugs. We have them every day.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, I talked to the chief today. He had three in the last. Well, fourteen hours.
Overdose stuff?
Yeah, yeah. It's just crazy. And those typically go in streaks by. Bad dope coming into the area, though it's a little. One is methadone. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, how you overdose on methadone? You're only supposed to get so much of it. They, they hoard some and then try to, you know, sometimes there's other factors that come into that or people trade with each other, but yes. Well, it's just getting. You would never think that methadone. Well, no, if somebody was trying to quit, no, they're not. Yeah. So there, there's all kinds of things that come into play under that. But yes, we have had some overdoses and. Um. You know, those are always a misfortune whenever we have them, whether. I know that the sheriff and I have been to some uh. Conference things on um. And where there's a big push to get. Alaxone, uh.
Narcan.
Yeah, Narcan, Alaxone, uh, but a dispensary and have one right at the sheriff's department. Um, I think that that's going to be coming. I wouldn't be surprised if L W P W doesn't try to get one as well. There's one at the, at mental health. Yes. That people can access. Yep, they can access and it's free. Um, I know that in some places they put them in and they're literally cleaned out first. Within short, very short periods of time, people are in that much uh, need of this, of the drug to uh, reverse. Yeah, for overdoses. Going in and getting in the pharmacies to us, putting that vending machine in there. It's like a hundred percent. Yeah, oh, yeah. It, it, it. It's just the times we live in and it's, you know, a, a reality. Um, so there's some of the, the funding that has come through with uh, the um, opioid fundings. Um. We're finding that. With some of the new drugs, there's more and more things being tried to be smuggled into our correctional facilities. So some of the ideas are maybe to look at. Some of the new higher tech scanners that we don't have a scanner, a full body scanner right now. And it certainly would be nice because. Um, now it's the old fashioned way, but if you gotta find them, but yeah, you gotta go. Looking in places that are so nice to look. But anyhow, um. Uh, so those are some possibilities of things that we're looking at. Um. I think uh. The last meeting I wasn't at, but Mike was here and he talked to you about how many things they catch at the door. Oh, yeah. Just yesterday, we had a female come in here with a lead weighted sap. I haven't seen one in years. Like, they used to be fairly prevalent. Then you kind of, they went away. I, I was like, you gotta be kidding me. And it was a brand new one. I mean, it was all, it's very nice finished. Considering, it's sitting on my desk right now. It's a sap, a leather, it's a spring. Like a billy club with a spring on it. Yeah, a billy club with a spring on it. And it's got a lead weight, round lead weight on the end of it. And then it's all laced really fancy with. Le, or leather. Uh, X someone or? She had no idea that she was carrying a five year felony with her. She went, oh, hey, I don't want that anymore. So, you know, you can legally buy them, you just can't legally possess them. Probably got it for self. So it's one of those things, like you can legally go to lots of places and buy a set of brass, brass knuckles, but if you possess them and carry them out. Then you're breaking the law and it's a five year felony for that. So that's the thing we, we've been messing around with that a lot. So it, once again, right here at the. Courthouse doors, uh, John Terry caught that and Scott Freed was there too. And so it was a, a good find on their part because. Somebody who knew what they were doing with that could, could seriously knock some people out in a hurry with that. So, um. That's kind of all with the sheriff's. that's kind of all with the sheriff's office. Cole Swan retired. You guys all know he was retiring. Is, he's retired. He's been taking in some, uh, Detroit Tigers baseball games and he likes to send it to the stadium.
He's an officer for the city.
Yeah.
For, I thought he'd retire there, but no, he came over here and he's fourteen, fourteen years and fourteen years here. I don't know.
Forty-three years total.
Yeah, I know he was.
I wasn't very old.
He did a great job for the city and I know he did a good job for the county, so.
Um, and then we have, uh, several officers who are approaching retirement, some that are our retirement and they're staying on with us. So we hope we can keep it as long as we can. So. Anyhow, any questions at all about the sheriff's office?
I think we need to look at the program about sending these kids, these people to school and try to homegrown people. There's some, how that guy did that when he quit two weeks later or something.
Yeah, down here, I, I've talked to him and told him if he was ever interested in, um, you know, working for us. But I mean, I don't know how rich you feel about that, but I mean, I, I was at his academy graduation and I mean, he won awards and all this stuff. And you're just like, wow. Now you checked me out at TSC. It's like, wow, you had to really want it to go to the academy and to work that hard to win these awards. And then you know, he's doing the same job he was doing before. So you, you just never know with these people. We've got two young people going through FTO right now. Um, and they are progressing along. I just was on a call before I came here. We had a special needs, um, fight on a bus, uh, right here in Ithaca. And one of our young, the young female officer, she jumped right on the bus after, I mean, I myself and Jack, or Jack Sewell were on there. All right, but she jumped right up there to see if there was anything she could do. So they're progressing along with their training. Um, you know, it's just like a lot of other professions that we're finding, a lot of these young kids that come into the field really don't have a lot of um, worldly experience. Things are different today than they were. Like for anyone in this room, really when we grew up, it's just very different on things that they've been involved in. And I mean, everybody spends their life looking at their cell phone or computer screen and not having interactions. They don't have interaction, personal interaction skills and they, a lot of people have never. I mean, even our athletics, think about the way our athletes are run today. It's, it's so different than, um, the way we all grew up with, you know, bumping into somebody or whatever. That's all.
The meatheads.
Yeah, and it's, and all that's done. And so you, you have to train all that stuff. Now, we do find like one of our officers, there was an incident, Ashley at the, um, just outside of the, the, uh, one of the homes down there and this guy went after one of our officers and one of our, our branded, the young male, um, he jumped right in and that, you can't teach that instinct. And that's where, you know, that's one of the things we, we're very happy to see was you, you can't teach that wanting to get in there. And I mean, this is the first day where his brand-new black uniform, so it had blood all over it when it was done. And, you know, I was like, kind of a cool picture for your retirement, okay, someday. This first day you got to wear your new uniform and it's completely covered in blood and the egg gets jumped in good. So I'm hopeful for both of them that they are going to, uh, work out and be officers and stay here with us for a good period of time. They're both fairly, well, one is relocating actually. And, uh, two, um, down to Elba Township and then, uh, Village Ash, actually. And then one, uh, lives just north of, uh, Elba, so she's from here close. So I don't think she'll, she'll on the bunny or she says the community's really not that bad. So anyhow, anything else?
We've had several meetings about how we can recruit better.
Yes, absolutely. And, and you've challenged me with some, I'll be honest, I've, I've talked to some industry leaders. I was on the phone for quite some time today with, um, somebody today that gave me some great ideas and things to, you know, that's one of the things I love about. We can have open conversation and, and any challenges me to things that are, I'm excited to go and get the information. So.
He's a little bit on the younger side. Not you.
Yes, take care.
What about veterans? Uh, you know, they have a lot of schools are looking at, uh, police officers in the schools. We thought about like getting veterans involved, maybe simple things like walking the streets or checking. Or I don't know, I don't.
Um, none of our schools have approached us about, I mean, there, there's talk about it, but it's all a big financial thing. It's because most of the schools fund the nine months of the school's year of the officer's salary and most of our schools aren't sitting in a position where they have that kind of funding to do that. Um, I just, this week, we've been having, uh, ongoing, uh, sheriff and undersheriff, um, email tree. And they're actually talking about this very thing right now is who has them. And it's really not very many counties actually have schools who are doing that. Um, veterans, I know there's been a big push for a long time to try and get as many veterans coming out of the service who join the law enforcement ranks. Um, unfortunately, Michigan is not a state that has a tremendously large population that joined the United States military. And any one of the branches, our numbers, if we look at the I don't think we even fall in line with our, um, population as far as where we're, we hit. So we don't have a tremendous amount of them who are coming into the ranks in our state. A lot of your southern states get a ton of them and guys that leave the service and they're already living in the south while they go to the and we just don't have that luxury here. So, um, but I understand, you know, if, if the vets would, uh, would be interested in coming and working in law enforcement. I'd be very happy to interchange, interviewing them and, and doing backgrounds on them.
Also being in schools a lot, um, I've been in a couple of schools where we have officers that bring dogs through. I think that's good. The kids want to be just like that officer.
Yep. Yeah, we've got, our, our dog is going through a bunch of the schools right now. I think he's got a bunch of these going through at Alma, actually, but he's trying to hit all of the schools. Um, Missy's a night shifter, so he has to arrange his schedule. His sergeant got hurt during, uh, physical tactics training. So he's on light duty. Working day shift, so we don't have the availability to just move him whenever. When there's a full squad of people, it's pretty easy to rearrange his days and, and having available to go to, go through the schools. But he really enjoys that, going, taking the dog around. I know that. Thank you.
Eric Ripley, uh, City Mayor for City of Alma, just for the camera, just in case. Just wanted to comment a little bit about the airport. Um, I know we've been working on it for a long time. Um, there's one thing that I've learned um, in the little time I've been in this position, this one seat, as opposed to all the years that I've been with the city and dealing with the airport. Um, patience was a, a big deal because it doesn't matter what's happening um, within the county. Sometimes this, this township of this community is doing better than another one financially. And we've always been able to find a way to come together on those things. I know this one's, it's, it feels frustrating on both sides. You know, I was hoping, and it may, that's probably my, maybe my mistake, after the last meeting, um, that, uh, you needed to answer this meeting without going to the commission. Cause I spent two and a half hours with commission at our last meeting, going through sewer and rate, um, uh, issues. Because, uh, Ithaca, St. Louis and us are dealing with major, major rate increases. And we're gonna have to explain those to our, our citizens and some of you represent those, those citizens. And I'm sure as soon as they don't really realize that until they get that bill, they're gonna see that. You know, our elected officials, they need to understand that. So we spent two and a half hours basically going through all that and Dave was there for some of that discussion. And, uh, and obviously had to jump some results. So I apologize that it's taken this long. I do really believe that where, where that resolution is at, it's, it was, you know, real close. I hope to be able to speak with them on this coming Tuesday. And, uh, everyone can say, yep, this makes sense without having to any, any more disagreements. The, the, the airport's always been something between the county and the city since nineteen sixty-five. And, uh, obviously if you read those, uh, those old agreements, you know, the airport commission and such, I'm sure they were having these exact same conversations with each other. And, uh, they got through them and, um, and everyone was hopeful, you know, was, I think, better for it. Um, out there, we've been running the airport just to basically keep it legal, keep it open. I hope that, um, if, you know, get the operation underneath the county-wide of, um, operation and maybe methodology, that there is a, um, some extra funding that can come in and, and bring some extra to it. All of us have our own uh, stances for our constituents and for our, our organizations. It, it's taken a long time. I wish us, we could have done this in nineteen, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. That's where, you know, that's how far back I go of wishing this was, you know, done and over with. Um, but just realizing, I gotta explain this to my commission too, that, um, this is what happens sometimes when um, it, you, you come to a, a change that has to happen. And that's where we're at with the airport, um, and a few other, um, organizations. Obviously, you know, we're talking about law enforcement, talk about it, City of Alma too. Being recruit enough people and keep quality people too. So these things are always evolving and changing, uh, fire services, everything. So um, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, let's, I hope we don't lose that momentum of, uh, how we can work together for the betterment of not just, you know, for, for our two organizations, but the county as a whole. Because, you know, our success is your success, your success is ours. So, um, uh, again, I apologize that maybe my interpretation from our last meeting was a little off of where we need to be, uh, by today. So, um, but, I mean, that's all I wanted to say.
I was, I had a free, personally, I don't think you need to apologize at all. Um, I guess I look at this thing, it's going backwards sixty thousand dollars a month. It's bleeding and, um, and somehow we gotta stop it. And, and, and I'd hate to have this county, whether I'm here or not, end up with it, when it doesn't have any money. And now we've got to say to Chris, gotta find us some money to start this airport. There's some funds there today, maybe stabilize this or try to get it for a couple of years till we can get a handle on it. It's nothing's gonna change tomorrow. If we, if we, if you sign it over tonight, nothing's gonna really change tomorrow, but it's gonna take some time. And there's some funds there today, but at sixty thousand dollars a year going backwards. It's kind of, I'm just kind of a small business guy. I don't know how long you stay in business that long, you know, and, um, and that's what I look at is that somebody's gotta get a handle on it, say, whether it's you or us, you know, because I did that at the meeting when we were there. I said to your commissioners, I said, what happens if we continue there and we run out of money? Tell me where the money's gonna come because we're only putting in what, twenty-four, twenty-six? You guys are putting in twenty or something and you're getting that back for services. So now you got twenty thousand dollars to run a sixty thousand dollar deficit. Where's that other forty billion come from? To me, it's just kind of simple math, but maybe I look at it wrong. That's, that's my need to get something done fairly soon. Whether you do it or we do it, you know, we just gotta get it, we gotta spend that money wisely there and get that thing.
Is there some reason why you can't be doing this right now anyway, getting started on doing some of the things that you want to do or you don't know or?
We have really no authority to go do anything.
Some, I mean, you, you sit on the board.
So we've had one meeting.
Can't the, can't the, can't the board start looking at some of that, make suggestions to start this?
Yeah, we're, I think some of the new board, we're gonna come in like, but I just, one of the reasons I wanted to state that, so because obviously this is recorded on a camera. So everybody knows that this shouldn't be looked at as adversarial and I hope it isn't. Oh, not at all. Oh, no, I mean. Uh, because no matter what decision we make, it's gonna say trying to get over on the other one and this one gave up to this one or something like that. And I want to squash that because it's, it's enough of that. And the, the airport is a, is a county-wide asset and that's what we've been trying to work for, for, to get it underneath the situation. And the negotiations sometimes get ugly and we're not comfortable. You know, where we're at with that. But um, just, we, we were running, um, with the contribution. I was actually putting money into the fund balance, but I wasn't making a lot of improvements to the airport, other than what we're getting capitalized from the state of Michigan and the federal government. So I was able to build a fund balance. Really, the fund balance is actually a little bit better was than I took over. But dollars not much, it isn't, uh, carried as far as it used to be either, but. Well, I think people really sparked this. I mean, if you go back in history, a little bit of idle, but it's one of the chances pointed out. Cities pointed out, they've not paid in a few years, you know? And so it's really been the county and the, and the fund balance and that city of Alma has been.
No, it's, it's been, it's been these two organizations and the, the county and the city of Alma have been the catalyst for all these years. Of the airport being what it is, where it is. And it just needs to go to that next step. It's a change and it needs to, and that's where we're headed. So I hope those that are, they're watching this or, you know, hearing this, that from my perspective, and I think Chris's perspective, because obviously we've been talking a lot about this. We're, we're not.
You guys have been doing fine.
Not, this is a, this is not, uh, something that one, one over the other and, or ones. You know, um, if they don't do this, they're gonna lose out, they're gonna lose out. I, I think the discussions we've had have been good. And like I said, I, I think we've come a long way. And I think that bodes well for us moving forward here in the next, you know, couple, three years, opportunities that, that will come up. So, um, that's.
I guess the reason I brought that up, you'll soon know is, I'm just thinking like if everybody's working together right now. You can maybe start something, but yeah, you know, we're gonna continue on and somebody's gonna own this either. Hopefully the county, they take it over. Everybody's still working together to try to fix any little problem that they have out there. My nephew flies out there. He said it's a very nice outfit. So you know that there's people coming and going and, um, that it's gonna be a good investment.
Anything else?
Reserve.